All right, we are going to proceed here. Welcome, everyone. On behalf of the University of Montana and the Board of Regents, I'd like to welcome the members of the Board of Public Education to the University of Montana for the annual State Board of Education meeting. Governor Gianforte was unable to attend today's meeting, so welcome Dylan Klatmeyer, who's appearing in his stead. How do you like that one? LeAnn, would you please take role?
Chair Dombrowski.
Here.
Regent Buchanan.
Here.
Regent Rogers.
Here.
Regent Lozar.
Excused.
Regent Bow.
Here.
Regent Southworth.
Here.
Regent Jaeger.
Here.
Moving on to the Board of Public Education, Board Chair Tharp.
Here.
Board Member Hedelin.
Here.
Board Member Slinger.
Here.
Board Member Keith.
Here.
Board Member Hammond.
Here.
Board Member Quinlan.
Here.
Board Member Rasmussen.
Here.
Student Representative Mao.
Excuse me.
Dylan Klatmeyer, on behalf of Governor Gianforte.
Here.
Superintendent Aronson.
Here.
Commissioner Christian.
Here.
Madam Chair, there is a quorum, the board is ready for business.
Thank you, LeAnn. The State Board of Education holds a unique place in the Montana Constitution. As a group, this board is responsible for long-range education planning for the state of Montana and for, as the Constitution states, coordinating and evaluating policies and programs for the state's educational systems. Just over 50 years ago, the delegates to Montana's Constitutional Convention recognized the value of a board that comes together collectively to discuss matters impacting the entire spectrum of education in Montana, from the very beginning with our youngest learners through the highest levels of professional training. This board's constitutional mandate is a weighty responsibility, and I know none of us here take it lightly. As Regents, we have had a productive meeting here in Missoula over the last day and a half, and I wanted to share just a few highlights with you. First, we are thrilled at the recent news that Montana has been designated by the U.S. Economic Development Agency as a regional technology and innovation hub. Lot of great data behind that, I'll just tell you a little bit of, a couple of facts. We are just one of 31 hubs across the entire country, and it's a collaborative effort, and we heard a lot about it this morning, and we're just so grateful and proud of the collaboration and work that went into this designation. And it's about research, it's about innovation, and it will result in a tremendous boost to the state's students and the Montana economy. I'm also pleased to share that the overall enrollment numbers continue to show encouraging signs with increases in both resident and non-resident students, a 6.1% increase over last year in American Indian enrollment as well. Along those lines, we continue to work towards strengthening our tribal partnerships and improving tribal college transfer pathways. And at our last two meetings, we have been fortunate to have Stonechild College President Cory Sangray-Billy at the table to provide us with a critical link with the tribal college community. Another piece I want to share is an integral part of the MS, MUS Strategic Plan is to enhance resident student access, and the Apply Montana Portal, which launched in 2022, represents one of the keys to achieving that goal. Simplifying the enrollment process for resident students and helping Montana residents gain more knowledge about post-secondary education and its value can help transform Montana into a national leader of resident student access. The Regents are committed to continue to pursue these goals, and we envision plenty of opportunities to collaborate with our K-12 partners in assisting resident students with making solid, well-founded decisions about their futures after they complete high school. Dual enrollment is another important program. The success of dual enrollment is highly dependent on K-12 and post-secondary education. A bit later in the meeting, Joe Teal, Deputy Commissioner for Academic Research and Student Affairs, will update the group on this important pipeline. Students really are at the heart of what drives the work of the MUS and the Board of Regents. Student wellness is continually on our radar. At our September meeting, we heard an update on the activities of the MUS Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Task Force and learned about trends in college student behavioral and emotional health. Yesterday, we got our first look at plans for instituting a comprehensive approach to student well-being across all campuses. This will be through student training, and we rolled out across the system starting spring of 2025. Also in the realm of the board's student-centered activities, earlier today, we discussed a math and writing placement policy. Placement is one measure in a multi-year effort to better support students who enter the system with academic preparation needs. The Regents recognize that it's a collaborative effort to ensure Montanans are prepared to be successful in the fields of study. As this work moves forward, Ochi and our team of faculty and administrators welcome the opportunity to connect with the Board of Public Ed and others on how we can work together. And earlier today, the Legislature's Education Interim Committee joined us at the table for us to, again, share, like I talked about, the hub, and we also shared about our sprint degrees. There was a lot of conversation about what a sprint degree is and isn't and the future of that. We felt that was really an important shared policy goal that we were able to take some time with our legislative partners this morning. And I can tell you more about sprint degrees if you want to know about that as we move along. Also, Ochi, we provided an update during our joint session on the Single Course Catalog and Learning Management System. We actually didn't spend much time on that because we spent so much time on the sprint degree, but it is an opportunity for us, again, to be collaborative across our MUS. There is much more I could report to you about all the exciting work happening in the university system, the two-year community college, and on individual campuses, but given our limited time today, I'll end my remarks and hand it over to the Chair of the Board of Public Ed, Dr. Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Dombrowski. A question I often get is, well, what is the Board of Public Ed and what do we do? And there's a lot of things that are involved in the BPE's work, just some of the things that we do. All of the education prep programs flow through us, and, you know, the great partnership with the OPI as they review and then they present information to us on the approval of all the teacher prep programs, which is vital for the licensure. As an example of something that we just did during our meetings, we've been meeting since Wednesday midday, is approving at Salish Kootenay College, a new program to ensure licensure within one of their master's degrees. Of course, they have their own accreditation process that they achieved the approval to be able to grant this master's degree, but by going, working through the OPI and then coming to us for final approval, then that is a program then that can also result in teacher licensure. So that's that connection between the OPI, between higher ed, and that comes back to the Board of Public Ed. We also get many reports over our meetings from the Office of Public Instruction, and we do a lot of rulemaking. There's a lot of different rules that end up flowing through us. Chapter 53, English Language Proficiency, Chapter 54, Early Literacy, Chapter 55, Accreditation, we just finished a major rewrite of accreditation, Chapter 56, Assessment, Chapter 57, Licenseur Standards. So all of these things are working, again, in partnership with the OPI, and they all come through us. One of the things that has been really exciting to see over our last several meetings is getting to, you know, tours of different schools. And so we were able to tour three different schools here in Missoula along with that same Education Interim Committee, and so we got to see the great work being done, boots on the ground, talking to students, talking with teachers, and seeing what they're doing. And then it also gave us an opportunity to spend time with the legislators. They make the laws, and then they give them to us, and then we have to figure out how to put them into place, which then is one of the things with the rules that we end up having to figure out. One of those, the biggest thing that we're working on right now, is charter schools. The legislature passed two different charter school bills this past session, and one of them is currently engaged in the courts, but the other one is for the public charters, and we received 26 applications, which we need to review and discuss and bring recommendations to our January board meeting as to if they are going to be approved or not. If you listened to the testimony during the legislature, they expected a handful. 25 interviews being conducted later on this month is way more than a handful, but that's the work of the Board of Public Ed. We also have several committees that do a lot of work. An advisory council is MACI, which gives us a lot of great information on the American Indians served in Montana, but then we also have subcommittees of our board that work on various things such as assessment, licensure, we just heard a great report from OPI this morning, and reviewing variances to standards, all of these different rules, all of these different things that schools have to comply with for accreditation. We recognize that the one-size-fits-all doesn't fit all, and so we look at variances, and those all flow through the board. And we receive regular reports from the OPI and others as regarding all the different things going on. I'm looking forward to hearing more information from Mike later on on the MTDA, but that's also an entity that comes and provides regular reports to us. And you may not realize, the Montana Board of Public Education is also the school board for the Montana School for the Deaf and Blind. So we have a liaison committee that works with them on a monthly basis, and their superintendent gives regular reports to us, and we approve everything going through them, just like a regular school would be coming, has a regular school board. And one of the things that we've been very excited to be part of is what was referenced, I think at the end of your morning meeting, was the Constitution of Players, and working with the Regents, working with the state superintendent, working with the legislators, working with locally elected school board members, and all of those things, all of those different people identified in our 1972 Constitution to look at, how can we rethink education going forward, you know, 50-plus years later? So lots of things with that. And a personal issue that I liked, that I'm working on a lot in my own capacity with other hats that I wear regarding student mental health. I also serve as the elected superintendent of schools for Richland County, and so we work a lot with student health, our student mental health there, various initiatives, and as Dr. Watson from School Administrators of Montana shared with us this morning, they've recently received a grant to be able to work on the same initiative within our K-12 schools, and so they're going to be putting together groups. And so recognizing also how important mental health is and with the overall goal of supporting students and number-one issue of reducing suicide in Montana. And so lots of different things on our plate. As soon as I got elected chair, I ended up on all of the subcommittees as an ex-official member, and I didn't realize how many hours every week we're going to be committed to this, but it's good work, and I'm honored to be able to provide it, and so hopefully that tells you a little bit about what we do at the Board of Public Ed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next on our agenda is Superintendent Elsie Aronson.
Hello again. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of this esteemed committee. It's my honor again to give you a little bit of where we are, but I know I've given a lot of the homework to the Board of Public Ed, and it's not to keep you busy, it's just to make sure that we have innovation throughout our state. And so I'll start with innovation. We have, in our second year of residency, and very, very pleased that this program is moving forward, even with the help of the legislature, they've recognized that growing Montana teachers in their Montana communities is exceedingly important for retaining them in their Montana communities. The other part of innovation is, of course, the standard revision that Dr. Tharp had mentioned just recently. And again, yes, there's been a lot of work that our agency does to prepare, negotiating rulemaking, all of this is very transparent before we give any indication to the board, and then it is the board's decision on any of our teaching and learning standards, and we have 11 of them. The other one is that we have had a tremendous focus on parents this last year. And being innovative, we just heard when we were at the meeting quite recently here from Shannon Boswell, who leads up our career technical associations and with our CTSOs that work directly in our schools, that we have a survey out for Perkins to make sure that Montana is doing the best and that all of our students, even in our upper elementary grades, have this opportunity. So we've put a parent group side by side. We also, not only on a parent group, but we have industry, private industry with that as well. We have a new assessment system, which we just discussed as well, and won't go into much detail with that, but Montana is leading the way in this innovation to recognize student success. More importantly, from a teacher, I'll say it again, to honor the teacher and the good work that is happening closest to learning, which is in that classroom. We are also, just on the note that I have, when I came into office, we had four buildings on the Capitol complex, we are in the process of moving into one building. I've offered choice to employment, which means then opening up the elasticity in the market to be able to offer choice to the employee to live anywhere where our schools are. So right now, of our 56 counties, I'm only at 24 counties, but it doesn't mean that you can't serve your schools or your community schools or the great state of Montana, wherever you might live in our great state. That's one of the innovations that we have done, is offering choice. We've done a lot of data modernization, one is the licensing system, which is offering professional development, and it's not state subsidized. If you've ever gotten on our Teacher Learning Hub, you're going to be finding out many, many things. We're also bringing in apps so that a teacher can recognize math and reading and science at ease and the state standards as well. All of this is because of some of the great use of those federal COVID monies. So when it comes to offering teachers professional development to grow and make sure that our teachers are well-versed in our state standards has been part of this innovation and this movement. We also have new graduation requirements, and I thank the board for accepting our proposal. We have civics will be a graduation requirement, we're giving pause to get our schools up to date on that. So it won't happen for this graduating class, but it will for the next. And it's not just about civics, it's about financial literacy, to make sure that our young Montanans and the youth of our state recognize the value of the economy as we move forward. I want to say then, moving forward, because we can look behind, but in education, let's all look forward. It's about innovation moving forward, and this is focusing on not just students, as I've always said, but we're really peeling back special education, recognizing different abilities from students, from parents, from communities in order to serve. It's not just on an inclusive model of recognizing classroom teachers or wanting to make sure that I have more co-ops across our state or more special education services in our rural. This is really making sure that our students have all abilities. Understanding personalized learning has been an emphasis with the legislature for many years, and now in implementing it, and exceedingly then with IDA and the Federal Act. And I want to leave it at this, and thank you, Madam Chair, and members. The last final discussion is about teachers, and it's my honor to introduce our Montana 2024 Teacher of the Year. And I could talk about it, I could read his bio, we could pass it all out, but I believe it's more important that you hear from him, that you hear from Kevin, Montana's Teacher of the Year, the great things that he has done, but his vision of innovation and moving forward so that all of our children across our state recognize who they are, who they want to be, and then make sure that that path is very vibrant for them. So if I could, I'd like to introduce Kevin Kipman, Montana's 2024 Teacher of the Year.[1075.83][1075.83][applause]
Well, thanks for having me. It's good to be here. You know, one of the things I like to talk about is, you know, we as teachers, we're in the trenches, and every day we get up and focus on our students. And myself, I get up every day in Browning, knowing that the social problems and things that are there, we get up every day and we try our best. And so I'll always be an advocate for teachers and students, and I like when you talk about mental health. It's needed. And so being Montana Teacher of the Year, I want to do my best to represent all of you and all the students, and whether that's in pay, our mental health, impact aid schools, and so on, and especially languages. Languages are our defining characteristic. Ni chi pox in our real speak language. And so that is one of the things that I want to fight for, is endangered languages, world languages, all languages, and how important they are to us. And before I want to go, I want to sing a song for you all, and the song's a thank-you song. And I'm grateful every day to be on this earth, one more day, with my family, with my students, with my teachers, and this earth. It is awesome to be up every day and focus on what I need to do as far as education and so on, and I hope I do my best in representing the state of Montana and the native community in Montana. So this is a thank-you song, and I thank you guys for listening and allowing me to be here.
That was wonderful. Thank you for sharing, and congratulations. Next on our agenda is Dylan Klatmeyer with remarks on behalf of the governor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations. I know Board Member Keith and I really enjoyed getting to meet you in the interview process. You'll be a great representative for Montana. I also want to thank the Ochi staff for putting this meeting together, the Regents for hosting, especially LeAnn, Jasmine, and Joe for just helping bring this meeting together. It's always great to have these two boards meeting in joint session after a productive week of individual meetings. I know that there were a lot of topics that you dived into this week, and being able to come together and share some of those highlights, I think is really important and an important role that this board plays. I know I enjoyed going back and forth between the meetings. It was exciting to see progress made on a lot of the things that we've talked about over the last year, such as targeted intervention for early literacy, data modernization, the Common LMS coming to fruition, and then, of course, the Tech Hub and Education Design Lab initiatives. Looking back at the past year since we last met, I do think we have a lot of successes to showcase in both the K-12 and post-secondary education and coordinated efforts between the two. I know the governor personally appreciates the, you know, ever-growing leadership role that these two boards are taking to expand educational opportunities for Montana families. You've been busy, but it's been productive and meaningful work. The governor's had the opportunity to visit many of your schools and colleges this fall to highlight some of those innovative programs that are occurring. When the governor met with this board last year prior to the legislative session, he asked that we focus on a few things, such as proficiency in work-based learning, public-private partnerships, and other innovative approaches to education delivery that advance student success and the workforce development needs of our economy. By the constitutional officers working together, as Chair Tharp mentioned, we've been able to accomplish a lot of these goals over the last year. Some notable examples are doubling advanced opportunities funding, expanding education choices, modernizing the digital academy. On the post-secondary side, securing sprint degrees and continuing 1, 2, 3, and CTE, a focus on CTE funding. And then, of course, through board administrative action, again, as Dr. Tharp said, we're starting to get proficiency-based teaching techniques into the colleges of education. So these are all exciting things that I think we've seen really grow over the past year, and I know are important to the governor, so he appreciates your leadership in those areas. And I'm just excited to hear this afternoon now the updates on dual enrollment and the digital academy. I think those are two areas that really show crossover between K-12 and post-secondary education. With that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dylan. All right, next on the agenda is Joe Teal, Deputy Commissioner for Academic Affairs.
Members of the board, thank you for having me today. You know, the hope of this presentation is just to give you a highlight of one key tool that's increasingly acting as a bridge between secondary and post-secondary, helping students get a start early on on college-level coursework that can help them if they come to our campuses or if they go straight to a career. And to help with that, I did want to start by really highlighting, and many thanks to Regent Southworth, the Two-Year Committee of the Board, our two-year colleges around the state who really take a main and leadership role on building that dual enrollment pipeline. Where this fits into kind of our two-year colleges' larger strategies. For this year, those initiatives are kind of highlighted around, how do we improve the high school, the college, to career pipeline? How do we make those pathways in our high schools, leveraging our colleges clearer in terms of how they launch you into a degree pathway or into a career? How do we increasingly bring industry into supporting and ensuring our curriculums align to the workforce needs of the state through programs like sprint degrees? And then how are we, in all of that, building a longer-term infrastructure for high-quality and flexible pathways? Not only how do these pathways stack together as folks move into and out of education throughout their careers and lives, but also how do we have some of the data infrastructure to determine which are working as we intend? Give you a sense for why we're focusing on those. We have populations that we think we can serve better. Working-age adults, we think, need more flexible and affordable training pathways. They need shorter credentials that, when they come back to education, still count for something. And then the focus today is really on how we are accelerating, leveraging the increasing adoption of dual credit to help high school students. And increasingly, what we're looking for there is not just disconnected college credits, it's great if you're getting a college credit that helps you get into school, helps you proceed through more quickly. How do we make those connected and contributing to a program, a study, to career exploration so that they're increasingly useful to those students as they move forward? Just to give you a sense of where we're at in some of that progress and why we're excited to update this board is because there's never been more students taking dual enrollment courses in Montana than there has been today this year. Those students are taking and attempting more credits on average than they ever have before, and they're completing more credits on average than they ever have before. And a higher portion of those credits are in career and technical education fields, and that's due to close partnerships over years between our office, the Office of Public Instruction, our two-year colleges, high school districts around the state to bring increasing evidence, emphasis to those CTE fields. It's also, we now have a greater share of our high schools around the state at all levels, C, B, A, double A, who have and can provide access to dual enrollment courses in their high school through creative partnerships, including partnerships with the Montana Digital Academy that you'll hear about a little bit later. And that's led to a state where we now have much more balance than we've had before, participation across our region and our communities in dual enrollment and dual enrollment experiences, and a state where now we have a little over 1 in 3 public school Montana students participating in dual enrollment before they graduate high school. And in the university system, only one reason of many that we're proud of the effort that we've taken to date is because nationally and in Montana, taking a dual enrollment course not only makes it more likely that you go to college, and that's shown in this data here, our coming to the MUS rate of high school graduates in Montana is around 31% among dual enrollment students. It's between 48 and 60%, depending on the timeframe. And so not only are you more likely to come to college, but for some of these students, they have a year or two years of college under their belt so they can finish, enter the workforce that much more quickly. So where are we taking this next? The hope is, as I said, to seed experiments, to look to some of our great examples. We have President Slinger here, who has done great work spreading a course on soft skills across eastern Montana and, I think, soon beyond. We've had excellent work by Angela McClain, our director, who is here with us today, on Montana's Future Work, trying to build pathways, source pathways through different colleges around our state so that you're not only completing a few credits, but you're completing an entire industry certification before you graduate high school. And coming up with better pathways, like the Teachers of Promise pathway, to leverage these dual enrollment credits and opportunities to have, grow your own opportunities in some of the most- in some of the most vital fields like education that we have in our state. So, in summary, I think we have a lot of growth. Many thanks to the legislature this past session for supporting the one-two-free initiative, which I think has been an important piece of that. Many thanks to the partnership with school districts, the Office of Public Instruction. But also, I think, some good ideas and some good models and examples around the state of how we can make these credits more useful in students' pathway, how we can make them more broadly available, and amplify the impact of the widespread adoption that we've now achieved of dual enrollment coursework. Happy to open for questions or discussion.
Questions for Mr. Teal?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Mike Agostinelli, oh, I'm not going to say that correctly. And with a name like Dombrowski, I share the mispronunciation, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mike Agostinelli, a great Italian name from Anaconda, so happy to join you here today. My, you're probably expecting Dr. Jason Neifer, our executive director, but I wanted to let you know that he is at the National Rural Education Summit, speaking on artificial intelligence and education to a national group. So, he asked me to join you here today, and I'm very pleased to be here. So, I have a quick report about all the innovation that's happening at the digital academy, and we got a lot going on, so I will jump into it here. I wanted to start with a little grounding of the good work we've been doing for the past 13 years at the digital academy. We offer a variety of programs for students across all over public schools in the state. The first is original credit. This is our largest program. We currently have 88 course titles that serve AP, dual credit, elective, core courses. We are employing on a part-time basis 150 teachers from across the state of Montana who work in a part-time capacity with us to deliver those courses. In addition, we have our FlexCap, or Flexible Credit Alternative Program, which is designed around the proficiency-based movement in this state. So, the idea of this program is we've broken semester, the typical semester, into quarter chunks. We've made this as flexible as possible so students can enroll at any time in the year, open enrollment, and then, early exit if they show proficiency. Our goal here is to work in partnership with our schools to provide a model of how this can look in the proficiency-based framework. The third program is IPCs, or Individual Pathway Courses. This is a small but very important program to serve our most, our highest-risk students across our state. Students with a significant X-factor in their life, think child's diagnosed with cancer, right, and is at, in a hospital typically out of state, getting treatment. They need an ultra-flexible environment in which to learn, and so, we pair a Montana public school teacher on a one-on-one basis with that student to offer the ultimate flexibility in helping them continue on their educational pathway. Of course, there's been some discussion about the Ed Ready Montana Program through the meetings this week. This program is housed at the Montana Digital Academy. We are so proud to host this proficiency-based program that targets math and English readiness. This program is supported by the Dennis and Phyllis Washington Foundation and is separately funded from the rest of our programs. And then, finally, and I'll get a little more into this in a moment, but due to the action of this past legislature, we are now expanding our services and really excited about some of the new opportunities that we're going to bring to schools across the state. So, a brief enrollment update. These are early numbers, but it's great news. We are up across the board. In every program that we have, we have significant increases, and I think it just speaks to the supplemental role that we serve in, but also the deep partnership we've built with schools over this past 13 years. You may notice that we've had a significant increase in our dual credit enrollment, which, as Joe mentioned, has been a real focus for the digital academy in partnership with Ochi to continue to grow opportunities, working with as many of the two-year colleges as we can to really have a great partnership to just open additional access and pathways for kids in dual credit. One of the things that's always very important to us is student voice in everything we do. We offer a student satisfaction survey at the end of every course, and I'm happy to report that last spring, 88.7% of students were either satisfied or very satisfied with their MTDA course experience. Of course, we obsess about the 11.3% that is not satisfied or very satisfied. But it's that student voice that helps us modify our program, change procedures with the goal of always meeting the needs of every student that comes through our virtual doors. There's been some discussion this week, too, about the Unified Learning Management System. The digital academy is participating in that, and I'd like to thank Ochi especially for the inclusion of the digital academy in this process. We felt very included and part of the conversations. We've had a seat at the table and very much appreciate that. We're jumping into this conversion headfirst. That's kind of how we roll at the digital academy. And so, we, it is our intent that by summer, this summer term, we will be fully converted to the Canvas Learning Management System, and then, moving forward, that's where we'll be. And so, we will share our successes and our growing pains with everyone else as we go through this process. And then, finally, as I mentioned, in 2023, House Bill 749 was passed, and this was a great collaborative effort about really looking to the future of the digital academy and how we can further serve our public schools across the state. So, the first thing that House Bill 749 did was expand the reach of what MTDA is really authorized to do. And as you can see at the top of this graphic on the right-hand side, the core services I've spoke about already. Now, these clearinghouse services will be additional outside of the semester-based framework that the digital academy has traditionally worked in to offer a variety of services to our public schools across the state, including short courses that are, lead to certification prep in the CTE field, industry certifications, of course. We're opening up our curriculum and platforms so that local schools can use our platforms and curriculum with their local teacher in their building if they would like to run their own digital program. As a matter of fact, some of those charter bills that have been being, or, excuse me, charter proposals that are coming through, we're in active talks with many of those programs to help power their initiatives if their initiative includes an online learning component. In addition to that, we are opening up access to third-party providers to even expand the reach of what local public schools can access from courses to short courses to semester-based courses with a full vetting process in place so that we can make sure that everything that's put in front of our public schools is of high quality and follows the latest research on online learning. Then, the final piece is competency-based testing services. Again, this is on the proficiency movement, and this really will allow districts some additional capacity to look at proficiency differently, and we want to be part of that conversation and helping out. On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll notice that the single sign-on, tighter integration piece. This is very important to us because we know as MTDA becomes a bigger player in many different types of learning models, we need to make it easy for local schools to both enroll students and get them to their learning. No one wants five different passwords and a whole mess to get from here to here to here, right? They want to streamline experience, so we're working on that end as well. The second part of House Bill 49 reformulated our governing board to be in alignment with the constitutional players' framework that we've all been learning about over this past year. And so, as you can see, we have representation from across those constitutional players. This went into effect on July 1, and after we went through the nomination process and got everything aligned, I'm happy to report that we had our first governing board meeting on October 10, and we actually have another, or second now, next week on Tuesday. So, we are through the transition and we're off and running. Representative Dr. Fred Anderson was elected as the chair of our board currently, and then, Dr. Teal has been, was nominated and accepted the vice chair role as we move forward there. So, there's a whole lot of other stuff that I don't have time to talk about today with you all, but I would end with this invitation. We love to share what we're doing. I think there's some really great innovation happening at the digital academy. We would love to dive into any of these topics deeper with any of you here today or watching to talk about the great work we're doing. So, I'll end with that. I'm happy with questions. My email's at the bottom of the slide, and thank you for the opportunity to present today.
Thank you very, very much. Are there questions for Mike? Oh, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Madeline Quinlan from the Board of Public Ed. I was struck by the 42% increase in enrollment for advanced placement, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are on what's driving that.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, what we have found is that we've made a push on all of our higher-level coursework, right, of specifically marketing and advertising to districts to make sure they're aware of those opportunities. I also think that where we're seeing the enrollment in AP is also rounding out both double A and A AP programs, right? One of the realities of the AP landscape is that, you know, it takes a special teacher with special training to do this. And so, what we've seen is that a lot of districts have some of the AP course titles, but not all. So, I also think it's correlated to more districts embracing AP and then realizing that they can actually start a program rather small, supplement with MTDA to grow the program, and then, over time, build their own face-to-face program as well.
Please.
Thank you. And Mike, some of those micro-credentials are things that really fascinate me about that ability to provide those, and just thinking of some of them, that'd be most powerful for the folks out in eastern Montana, like CNA, OSHA-10, and SERVE-SAFE. Are those things that are already on there or in the works?
Thank you for the question, and yes, 100%. So, we have been spending really the last year doing a lot of learning, right? Because this is a new realm for us in figuring out, okay, what are the right certifications? What are the right things to start with? So, we've been meeting with everyone across the state, OPI, all of our educational entities to help us best understand, and I'm happy to hear that those are the things you're looking for because those are absolutely on the roadmap here for us. We're also looking at how we can best coordinate with the Department of Labor and all the different entities. One of the complexities that we've found is that the digital academy is really good at providing some of the baseline learning, right, of the CTE field. Where it gets a little tricky is like welding and the hands-on part of welding. No one wants MTDA sending kids welding kits across the country and saying, "Go for it," right? So, what we're trying to be really thoughtful about is how can we build a framework, work with the other partners across the state who have boots on the ground locally, our two-year college partners, OPI, everybody that's working on this together so that we can fit in the role that makes sense for the digital academy. But yes, to answer your question directly, we are working specifically on those CTE certifications.
Please.
Chair Dombrowski, Mike, thank you. That was a great update on the digital academy, and the percentages were, showed real growth. But I'm curious about the actual number of students who are using and completing courses and a breakdown of where that's happening. I mean, how many are eligible? How many are completing a course? What percentage of the Montana high school students are taking a course?
Yeah, excellent. So, a couple of answers. I'm happy to send it to you directly also. This is all on our website, all of these reporting numbers. We very much believe that these are important questions that people should have open access to get. So, we have a whole reporting hub on our website. Off the top of my head, last fiscal year, we served about 3,500 students in just over 5,000 enrollments, right? So, what we've seen is we've seen a bit of an uptick on students taking multiple digital academy courses with us in a given semester than we have in previous years. I think some of that is becoming, there's a real comfort with students in this modality of learning. And so, because of that, we've seen, and we've expanded our capacity to allow for more enrollments as well. So, that gives a quick snapshot of the number, but we, on our website, also break down to the specific school where those enrollments are coming from. But if you'd like, I'd be happy to send that information directly as well.
No, thank you. I'll get on the website. A follow-up question is, when we think about the vacancies in teaching positions across the state, particularly in rural areas, are we seeing a pattern that those school districts are reaching out? And if they're short a math teacher, a biology teacher, a physics teacher, that they're then using digital academy as the replacement or a supplement? Or what can you tell us about that?
Yeah, excellent question. Thank you for that. The answer is yes, absolutely. We are helping. I mean, I'll be really honest with you. This is outside of, I think, the supplemental nature of what the digital academy was designed to do. We also understand and recognize that it's dire in some situations. I mean, I will tell you, I field multiple calls every semester of principals and superintendents that are pretty desperate, right? Because they literally don't have a math program, right? So, what we have tried to do to help is a couple of things. First and foremost, we've built what we call our Full Subject Use Toolkit for administrators to try to do, to set out, here's what we know about when it's more of an emergency use that digital academy is being put into than a supplemental use, and the things to think about. A couple of those things are communication with your school community is vital, right? Everyone needs to understand why MTDA is being put, is being used in this context because the last thing a parent wants is an email from the digital academy if they don't know what digital class is coming. The other thing I'll tell you that is that the perception and the attitude of the administrators in the area matters a whole lot to how this goes, right? We have some shining examples right now where administrators across Montana have done a great job of setting the stage to all stakeholders, the community, their teaching staff, their students, about the why behind emergency use with digital academy. And it can go very well. What else are we doing? Well, in the past few years, we have added some additional student support, FTE, to our program to offer more wraparound support during the day for those students. This is not the answer or the fix. I think it's part of the help we can provide schools in really tough situations. We're here to serve in that capacity, and we're continually trying to reformulate and refine our program to help in these situations. But it is a challenging situation, no doubt.
Thank you. When, I guess I question a little bit the designation of emergencies since, you know, I suspect that a number of these school districts were going to have, you know, this emergency for the entire career of a high school student. So, should, is there a way for us to design a program in, you know, identifying that it's math where there's the biggest gaps and the most desperation from superintendents around the state? And really implement a program that would, you know, seamlessly cover the requirements of algebra or physics or one of those subjects? And not think of it so supplemental, but really as the least bad option for completion for these school districts that are in danger of just not finding teachers?
100%, yes, and it's actually some of the work we're doing, some of the refinement I'm talking about here is that we've always looked at the sequencing of all of our core courses. courses, right, to make sure that there's tight alignment, that we're addressing all the state's standards, but we're doubling down our efforts to make sure in our curriculum review process that it's as tight as ever, right, because of the very situation you're speaking of. This is also, in math specifically, why Ed Ready is such an important tool, right? Because it's twofold. It's not just about courses for credit. It's about addressing gaps in learning, and we know the biggest gaps we have right now in learning is in math, right? And this is where Ed Ready comes to play. So we have a solid toolset and I think a solid plan to help in this situation, and we very much are looking seriously at the fact that, like, this isn't a problem this semester and next semester. This is something that's a reality moving forward in the state of Montana, and we want to be part of the solution. So we are taking a holistic approach to it and making sure that our sequencing is tight so that if a student ends up taking their full math sequence with the Digital Academy, they are just as prepared for whatever they choose to do in life as in the face-to-face realm.
Just one last question with your indulgence. So on the website, can I also, you know, if we take Dual Credit, for instance, it looks like 80-some percent of the school districts that are eligible are participating. Is that data available? Like, there's a, of the, what percentage of the eligible school districts are actually have students enrolled in Montana Digital Academy?
Yes, the raw data, the raw data's there.
Okay. And the question gets to really to the point of, do we need to provide more incentives, you know, to adopt?
Thank you for that follow-up question, because I would say one of the things that we're hearing is that 1, 2 free has been super successful, right? What I'm hearing is now what happens once I've done with 1, 2 free, right? I want to keep going. I have momentum here, and I want to keep accessing it. And so what we have done, I mean, the reality is that the nice thing about being a high school student, if you're taking multiple credits, is often you can still have a very reduced rate, right, in which to take those courses. But I'll tell you, what I'm hearing is that they would like it 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 free, right? And so again, that comes down to funding and everything, but that's, that's what I'm hearing. So as far as, the other point I wanted to make about dual enrollment that I think is really important is that the Digital Academy is just enhancing access in our two-year colleges to the great programming that they're providing. We are not in a position to replace, nor do we want to. What I'm hearing from the enrollments we're receiving, right, is when our enrollments into RIT 101, for instance, that we're partnered with Helena College on, they're coming from areas that Helena College previously hadn't really seen enrollments come from, right? Because in the high schools in Montana, the Digital Academy is a known entity that's being used in lots of capacity, whereas Helena College isn't, it may be a new thing to them, right? So we're just acting truly as a funnel to help expand access to our two-year colleges. And one of my initiatives when I moved into this position is to build partnerships with each of the two-year colleges, because I want everyone to know that the Digital Academy is here as a partner for everyone, right? We're not going to pick and choose who we work with. We want to work with everybody, right? And so as we're building our strategic plan moving forward about what courses to offer through the Digital Academy, we're also looking at the other side, which is, which two-year partners does it make sense to align with per course and bringing that all together?
Thank you.
Great questions. That was helpful clarification and detail. Thank you. Any other questions or please?
I'm interested if you would speak a little bit more about your expansion to third-party providers and the partnerships with other national vetting organizations.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, the approach we're taking right now is that the Digital Academy does a lot. We know we can't do everything, right? And so there are some areas in digital learning that, given the makeup of our model, we don't have a great capacity to go into, and here's a prime example, right? In the world languages, we, one of our most enrolled courses is Spanish, right? We're almost engaged with every Spanish teacher in the state, because one of the pillars of Montana Digital Academy is we use Montana Public School teachers that are actively teaching in Montana. That's great. We've got Spanish covered. We get requests for Chinese. We don't have capacity in our high school system of certified Chinese teachers, for instance. So that would be a great opportunity for a third-party provider that's reputable, that has the teacher services attached, to be able to enhance what Digital Academy is offering by offering Chinese, for instance, right? So that's one example. One other example is right now, we offer coursework from 6th grade to 12th grade, right? There has been some interest in what does it look like in the elementary grades, right? That's not something the Digital Academy right now has the capacity to go into, but there's other providers out there that do. What I think was so smart about how this law was designed is it gives the Digital Academy and our governing board the authority to help vet these institutions so that we can make sure whatever we're putting in front of our K-12 schools is of the highest quality and is going to meet student needs.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Excellent. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the agenda called for board discussion. I feel like we've had that in the last 10 or 15 minutes, if that's okay, unless there's any other items or comments that any board member wants to make. All right? Terrific. So I'm going to move into the public comment portion of this meeting. This is a public meeting. I will now call for any public comment. Public comment may be offered on any item on this meeting's agenda or on a matter under the jurisdiction of the State Board of Education. The Board of Education is not accepting virtual public comment today, but written comments may be submitted to Dylan Klapmeyer at dylan D Y L A N dot Klapmeyer K L A P M E I E R at Montana.gov. In-person public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any in-person public comment?
So for this public comment, I come before you with my own words. I just want to introduce myself. My name's Lauren Fern. I've been a math educator for over 30 years. I've been teaching at the University of Montana for 21 years. I'm currently the Math Discipline Lead at Missoula College. I am the Student Success Coordinator for all GenEd Math at the University of Montana, and I run the entire placement for mathematics at the university. I'm coming here with two items, one a concern and one perhaps more of an invitation. When we were looking at placement at the University of Montana, one of the things we wanted to consider was multiple measures, and we've learned that high school GPAs are perhaps one of the best predictors for students in their success in college, excuse me. And it then came to my attention that the state of Montana only requires two years of mathematics of their students, and I think this is something that's very concerning and something that I believe really needs to be addressed. These are some of the lowest standards in the country, and I think we're really doing a disservice for our students for not preparing them for the world that they're entering. Even if they're not going to college, they're missing very critical, very, they're missing critical thinking, problem-solving skills. So I would really encourage the board to maybe take a second look at that. The second is more of an invitation. This is something that I've spoken with about, with Joe Teal quite a bit. I would love to partner with you all in the high schools to develop a bridge program. We currently use Ed Ready for our placement, and it doesn't need to start in college. That sort of placement can actually start in a high school when they can get the support, and I think that would help maybe some of the high school students realize that they actually are college-ready and that they do have the potential to be successful. These things don't need to start right then, and I think that we have a lot of opportunity additionally for the students in the high school. They can then fill in any gaps, and then they'll know when they enter college that they're already placed into a college credit-bearing math class. I would love the opportunity to work with the high schools on this, because I think there's a lot of potential to streamline things for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I would say thank you, and thanks to all of you for your attendance and our joint opportunity to continue to explore and improve education for all of Montanans, and have a great weekend.